Okay. All right, it's just about seven o'clock, so I'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, January 12th, 2016. The first order of business is review and approval of the meeting minutes for December 1st, October 26th, and December 8th.
I'm moved that we approve the meeting minutes of October 26th, December 1st, and December 8th, 2015, as written.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. Let's see, confirmation of future meeting dates, we have January 19th, January 26th, and then open dates after that are February 2nd. Then we have town meeting after that on the 8th, so probably have a meeting then. David, you said the 16th isn't not good for you?
Yeah, the 23rd would work.
Twenty-third, twenty-third is fine.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so February 2nd, February 8th, and February 23rd. Okay. Item four on the agenda is the approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Item five is citizen speak. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none. We are on to item six, which is going to be our public hearing on stormwater utility.
Joe, I've been informed Julie is recalled as the last part of the presentation.
Right, so we could go through with it.
We could get started, and she could join us almost seamlessly.
Okay, all right. So I'll just say a couple of words first, just to introduce everybody. So we have with us tonight representatives from the Napa River Watershed Association and the Metropolitan Planning Council to lead us through a discussion of stormwater management. I don't know how many are aware, but the Environmental Protection Agency through the Clean Waters Act has been tasked with the management of stormwater discharge throughout the United States. The method devised to accomplish this task is it requires every municipality to obtain a permit to discharge stormwaters into streams, rivers, and other wetlands. It sounds kind of intuitive to get a permit to discharge something naturally occurs, but that's what we do. And it's, the mechanism is called the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, or NPTAs for short, and it requires each community to perform several mandatory procedures to comply with the requirements of this permit. So there was a permit first issued in 2003, which was supposed to be a five-year permit. It kind of morphed into a 15-year permit, something like that. But in 2013 or 14, draft guidelines were issued for the new permit requirements, and they substantially increased over the 2003 permit requirements. Now, the important thing to remember about this is, this is an unfunded federal mandate, and it's expensive, and it's getting more expensive. So what I presented here to do tonight is first shed some light on what stormwater management is, what it means, what the cost associated with stormwater management is, and potential mechanisms to pay for. So with that, it's Sarah, right? I'll invite Sarah up to, and you can introduce yourself.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to maybe just give a brief introduction. My name is Martin Pillsbury from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and we're working in partnership with the Napa River Watershed Association. Sarah's here tonight. And just to let folks know that for the last two years, we've been working with Milton and nine other towns in the Napa River watershed through a partnership that Milton has joined up with, that we helped to convene, to provide resources and information to prepare the communities for the permit that we know is coming. So what you're hearing tonight is a presentation to summarize some of the information we have pulled together to help communities understand what's in the permit, what some of the requirements are going to be, and some of the way, and some resources that we've helped to produce over the last couple of years, that are going to help the communities have a leg up on meeting some of the requirements. And then finally, the discussion, as you mentioned, about ways of paying for it. So there's a few different segments to our presentation. There'll be a few different speakers giving it. We'll start with Sarah Bounty from the Napa River Watershed Association.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Can you hear me okay in the microphone? So as Martin said, I'm Sarah Bounty from the Napa River Watershed Association. And the reason we're here is because we care about water bodies in Milton and in the surrounding areas, and we're, you know, looking to protect them and find the best ways to sustainably manage them, you know, years in the future. So I thought I'd start by giving a little bit of a background on what stormwater is, because it's something most people don't think about every day, but we're all impacted by it. So if you look at the slide, on the right, there's a picture, a diagram, that shows what stormwater is. So when rain falls on hard surfaces, which include things like roofs, driveways, roads, any, you know, impervious surface that that rain can't soak into, the water runs off of it. We've all seen this on the streets, on the sidewalks, you know, coming out of your gutters on your house. And then what that water does is it flows and carries with it any sort of pollution that may be on those hard surfaces, like pet waste is one of them, fertilizer from your lawn can also get in there, other nutrients, trash, you all see that on the roads. And all that water gets washed into what's known as a catch basin, those metal grates. There's a couple photographs on the left. Everybody has seen those in parking lots and roads. And what those grates do is that takes the water into a pipe that discharges into streams and rivers. A lot of people are under the misconception this water is somehow treated before it gets discharged, but it's not. It just goes straight into those streams and rivers, taking with it any of that pollution that you may have picked up along the way, including things like bacteria, nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus, any debris like trash, all of that gets carried in. So this is, you know, an issue that every town in Massachusetts and every place in the country has to face and deal with. It's also something important to think about, is the town is also providing a service to people by removing this runoff from the streets. Everybody knows when you're driving and there's a big puddle and, you know, the water starts to pool, that's not great to drive through. And so this is a way to get that water off the streets and, you know, out of the way, which is good. Unfortunately, the pollution is a side effect of that. So the town actually has to manage a lot of assets related to stormwater. So some of these are those catch basins I mentioned, there's about 3,800 of those in Milton, which is a significant number. Eighty miles of stormwater pipes in Milton, and 178 stormwater outfalls. And what a stormwater outfall is, is the exact point where that pipe discharges into the Streamer River. So it's, you know, definitely something that the town has to manage and, you know, maintain all this infrastructure that goes along with stormwater. Just to remind everybody, too, I know, you know, residents of Milton enjoy a lot of the water resources that, you know, we have here, including the Napa River. I put some photographs in here of water bodies around town to remind you. There's the Milton High School crew team practicing on the Napa River. A picture of Pine Tree Brook on some of those smaller streams that feed into the Napa River. Another picture from Fowl Meadow, a nice natural area that's partially in Milton, near the Blue Hills. And there's lots of smaller ponds and little streams that everybody knows, and I'm sure, you know, everybody can relate to the idea of wanting to protect those bodies of water and keep them clean and accessible for people to use. Some more photographs of just how those water bodies get used in Milton. Obviously, you know, recreation, canoeing, kayaking, boating, fishing, all of those things are, you know, activities people enjoy to do on clean water bodies. And, you know, the Napa River provides some historic character and charm to Milton as well. Over by the old Baker Chocolate Factory, it's definitely an iconic scene over there that everybody is familiar with. And also, the water provides habitat for animals and plants in town. The picture in the bottom middle there is, that's some smelt, which is a type of fish that actually spawns in Unquity Brook. So these fish swim in from the ocean, and then they spawn and lay their eggs in the freshwater of Unquity Brook. And then on the right are a couple of pictures to remind you some of those times when, you know, we do get those heavy rains and there can be significant increases in flow, and that can result in things like driving through those big puddles on the roads. So it's something, you know, that affects all of us, stormwater. All right, so the next slides I'm going to show you are some of the data from our water sampling program. This is a program I manage at the Napa River Watershed Association, where we have citizen volunteers go out and take water samples, and we measure the water quality by looking for those pollution sources and see how high the pollution levels are. So if you look at the map, the red boundary is just the watershed boundary, the light blue are water bodies, and all the different colored dots are sampling stations. And Milton is in the upper right of this map, just before the Napa River meets the Boston Harbor. So one thing to look at here is I'm showing bacteria results. So we measure E. coli and see how high the levels of E. coli are in the water. So as you look at the map, look at those small green dots, those are good, very low E. coli numbers. That means the water's safe for things like boating and canoeing and swimming and fishing. And then as you get towards the red dot, that indicates, you know, high levels of E. coli, where that water would not be suitable for those uses. So the data I'm showing on this slide is from 2013, and I'm going to switch to the 2014 data. And you can see if you, I'll go back to 2013 for a second, and to 2014, you can see there's a lot more of those orange and red dots that show up, meaning there's higher E. coli counts. We're measuring the quality of the water in the streams and the rivers, so this is indicating that there's more bacteria, more pollution in those streams and rivers. And the difference between these two years of data is that it rained on two-thirds of the days that we actually went out and sampled in 2014, whereas it didn't rain as often in 2013. And so you can definitely see how this stormwater issue affects the water quality and may impact some of those uses that people in Milton enjoy on the water bodies. The next slide, this is another map of Milton, so there's kind of a light gray boundary of the town of Milton. And you can see there's a lot of red on this graph, on the map, and that, what that's showing is actually impaired water bodies. So these are water bodies that have been designated as impaired by the state of Massachusetts because they are not meeting their designated uses, meaning the water quality is so impaired that they're not up to the level that they should be for things like boating and swimming and kayaking. So you can see there's quite a few in Milton. And, you know, I'll mention, this is not unique to Milton. Many towns around here have, you know, many of their water bodies are impaired. Definitely, the Napa River is one, you know, of course, that's, has been my focus, and I think, you know, it's important to note that that particular water body has been impaired for bacteria for a long time. There's other pollutants that have caused impairments, too, things like nutrients, phosphorus. But, you know, mostly just the takeaway here is that there are, you know, a significant number of impaired water bodies in Milton. You can see them listed there. And I'll point out, too, this was something I saw in the newspaper last summer, something close to home, you know, an impact of this problem of water pollution, which was Jamaica Pond in Boston was closed to water activities after what's known as a toxic algae bloom. And a toxic algae bloom is an overgrowth of algae in a water body, and the algae produces a toxin that can make people sick if you touch the water and touch your face. It can make pets sick. It can actually, you know, kill a pet potentially if they ingest the water. So it's not something to be taken lightly, and that's why the pond was closed, because it was experiencing this toxic algae bloom. You know, people couldn't go and, you know, do those activities on the water. And the cause of a toxic algae bloom is an increase in nutrients in the water, and nutrients come from stormwater pollution. So this is, you know, the effects of not taking care of water bodies is that you won't be able to do the things that you enjoy about water bodies. All right, so getting back to the title of the presentation, which was about MS4 permits. So an MS4 permit, that stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and this is a permit that's issued by the Environmental Protection Agency, and the town has been currently under their 2003 permit, but there's a proposed new permit that's expected to come out later this month, which will have significant changes to the regulations. So this permit tells the town how they can discharge water to the waters of the United States, including all those impaired water bodies I showed. So there's going to be, you know, requirements as far as what the town has to do to be able to meet the requirements of that permit. It's going to have about a six-month, well, exactly a six-month period of time after the permit comes out, before the town has to start meeting the requirements, but it's, you know, going to be affected, you know, effective this year, and something the town should start thinking about, and Milton has done a lot already to prepare for the permit, which is, which is good. So what I'm going to do is go through what the changes are from what the current 2003 permit has in it, to what is going to be required by this new permit. So it definitely does build on the previous permit that the town was already in compliance with, but it is going to be more detailed and rigorous, with the goal of, you know, keeping these water bodies clean. One thing it will require is a written plan called a stormwater management plan. That will kind of be a large planning document the town can use to inform them and, you know, make their decisions regarding stormwater and how they're managing it across many different aspects. This will involve many different boards and many different town employees. And there will also be a significant reporting requirement and data collection that wasn't seen in the previous permit, which will, you know, involve sharing data between departments and working on it together. And then another thing that is new and, you know, enhanced in this new permit is there's more requirements for discharges to those impaired water bodies, like what I showed in that map earlier, all those red water bodies, and for waters with what's known as a TMDL, or Total Maximum Daily Load. And what that is, is it's a pollution budget established by EPA and Massachusetts DEP that, you know, sets the limits for that particular water body, and that's, the Napa River has a TMDL for bacteria. They're, you know, pollutant-specific, so that's one thing to keep in mind as Milton moves forward on this permit. There's also a lot of deadlines, and it's a very prescriptive permit this time around, based on the draft that we have available. And again, it's expected to be finalized this month. So the six minimum control measures are, you know, the basic outline of the permit, and they're shown on this slide. So the first one is public education and outreach. The second is public involvement and participation. And the third is illicit discharge detection and elimination, or IDDE. The fourth is construction site stormwater runoff control, and stormwater management for new development and redevelopment, and then good housekeeping. And I'm just going to walk through these and briefly talk about what the changes are in each one of these sections. It's the same six minimum control measures that were in the 2003 permit, but each one has its own new features to it this time around. So for public education and outreach, this is one where the permit, the new permit is becoming more prescriptive for. It's going to require at least four messages annually being sent from the town about stormwater. So it depends, you know, what messages you want to send. It could be a piece of mail, it could be posting something online, or putting something on local access TV, but there is a requirement for those four messages. And also, targeting for different audiences, so those would be, you know, residential, commercial, landscapers, and industrial audiences, to make sure that everybody is getting the message about stormwater. So this will require staff time to produce the messages, as well as there's a requirement to track and evaluate how effective these messages are, to make sure that the program is working and is effective. Additionally, there's a public participation element, so the requirements here for the new draft permit would be to make the stormwater management plan and all the annual reports associated with it available online for the public to comment on, and then also provide an annual opportunity to participate in the review and implementation of that plan. The third of the minimum control measures, this one is the one where there's the most significant requirements, and this is illicit discharge detection elimination, or IDDE. And what this minimum control measure is, is basically looking for any kind of discharge that's getting in the stormwater system that's not entirely composed of rainwater. So things like sewage getting into the stormwater system are an issue, because this water's not getting treated like sewage does. So if that is getting into the stormwater pipe, it's making its way straight into streams and rivers untreated and, you know, presenting a significant source of pollution. So the requirements for this task, for the town to start looking into this further, is that the town has to have a bylaw prohibiting illicit discharges, and also there's significant mapping requirements, which Milton has actually gotten a lot of the mapping done already, which is great, but there's a requirement that each of the stormwater outfalls, so those points where the water is discharging from the pipe into the receiving water, there's a requirement to inventory all of those outfalls and make sure that, you know, all the details on them are known. And then there's a lot of fieldwork that's going to come with this, too, including testing for flow at every single one of those outfalls. And if you remember from the first slide, there's 178 in Milton, so that's visiting 178 different outfalls, taking a sample of water, and testing the water quality. This is going to be during dry and wet weather, too, which will, you know, make it a little more complicated. As well as, once there is an issue found, you know, if you see a spike of bacteria at one of these outfall locations, something you wouldn't normally expect to see in stormwater, you know, something beyond the level of what is in stormwater, then there will be a requirement to follow and trace back up the stormwater system and try and find the source of that problem, which may be something like a leaking sewer pipe, which then, you know, would require a repair to make it not discharge into the stormwater system. Once repairs are done, there would be a requirement to have a follow-up check to make sure, you know, it's not, you know, still broken or broken in a different way. So this fieldwork component is a significant requirement as far as time for staff to do this work. And, you know, keeping with the theme with the other minimum control measures, there's also going to be a requirement for a written plan that's very detailed, and detailed record keeping also, all the data that comes with this, you know, measuring water quality at 178 outfalls, you have to manage that data and report it back to EPA. The fourth control measure is construction site runoff control. So again, this will require a bylaw that will require erosion control, BMPs, or Best Management Practices, at construction sites. So that would be something in place to prevent erosion from contributing to stormwater runoff at a construction site. And also, the other requirements here relate to inspecting construction sites and enforcing anywhere where there's not, where they're not meeting the stormwater regulations, and then also reporting on those inspections. So again, staff time going out and, you know, seeing these sites and seeing how they're managing stormwater at them. The fifth control measure is new development and redevelopment. So this also has, you know, an evaluation and update to bylaws regarding land disturbance. Anything that disturbs an acre or more of land is going to fall under that. There's also a new requirement for treating the first inch of runoff for a new development. And then there's also a requirement to review zoning and subdivision rules to see how they might impact the ability of, you know, developers to put in some of these stormwater controls. So looking at things like how wide the streets are and, you know, how much space you need, because, you know, the goal would be to allow for more stormwater best management practices. An example of a stormwater best management practice is actually on this slide. You can see the picture, it's an area where we have the grassy area in the parking lot that's kind of low, so that the water that flows off the parking lot can go into that area, soak into the ground naturally, and not runoff into those storm drains. There's some more requirements here about reporting changes in impervious covers, so any new pavement that comes in by catchment areas, each stormwater outfall has an area of the town that drains to it, so that's what that's about. And then also, ranking retrofit opportunities on town property, so looking for places where you might be able to construct something like what's shown on this slide, and looking for places around town, on town property. There's also a new requirement for a phosphorus source identification report, and then another one for installing at least one demonstration retrofit. So again, a demonstration retrofit could be something like what's shown here. All right, so the final of the minimum control measures is good housekeeping, and this one covers a lot of the different town properties and making sure town properties aren't contributing to the stormwater pollution problem. So it will require an inventory of parks, buildings, parking lots, and, you know, going through those and seeing where we might expect to get some stormwater pollution, and then also creating operations and maintenance plans for those facilities, and then training employees so people are, you know, knowing the right way to dispose of waste and, you know, not creating a more of a stormwater issue. Another thing good housekeeping covers is optimizing catch basin cleaning, so that catch basins are not ever more than 50% full, which, the catch basin is, again, that grate where the water goes in, that you see on the road, but oftentimes you get things that build up in there, maybe a little bit of trash, you definitely get leaves that go in there, so they do have to be cleaned. So this is now going to be a requirement for the permit, and also reporting the number and total volume of the cleaning, so how much is coming out of those catch basins is going to be a requirement. So again, data tracking, that might be a little different from how the town has done things previously, as well as stricter requirements as to, you know, the schedule for cleaning. Another change is that there's going to be a requirement to sweep the streets twice annually, because everything on that street is going to wash into those catch basins, and then reporting on the miles of roads swept and the volume of the sweepings that come off the street. And then also, there will be a requirement to have stormwater pollution prevention plans, which would be like a planning document for the, you know, Department of Public Works Yard and any other areas where there's, you know, potential for spills and, you know, stormwater pollution. And this would include also training for employees, too, to make sure people aren't, you know, doing things that contribute. All right, so next, I'm going to get into the thing that everybody always wants to know about after we go through all those new changes, which would be how much is it going to cost? So a few things to keep in mind before I show some numbers. The costs definitely depend significantly on the language of the final permit. What I'm showing you as far as the, you know, the changes we're expecting, that's based on a draft permit. The final permit we're thinking is coming out this month, it should be similar, but it may change. Also, you know, something to keep in mind here is Milton does a little bit more of this than some other towns, but there's stormwater costs that, you know, may not be tracked under stormwater on the budget. There might be, you know, staff time from other departments that's in a different category, so it requires looking at things in maybe a little bit of a different way. And, you know, like I said, multiple departments are impacted. And then also, the costs are heavily dependent on, you know, what you're doing already, and then what's going to happen in the future, and how much effort is going to be put in. Milton has done a lot better than many towns. They've been, you know, at the forefront of our group of towns that we work with, which is great, so that should be, you know, good news for heading in to the new permit. And then also, you know, I mentioned with that illicit discharge detection elimination task, that's going to require, you know, looking for problems, and if you find problems that you need to repair, that's going to change the cost, too, and you can't always plan for exactly how much that's going to cost. And the last thing to keep in mind is that these estimates were developed by the Milton Department of Public Works, so Joe Lynch actually came up with the numbers. All right. So on this table, I'm showing a couple of different things. So we have the two different columns, we have the existing program only, which would be exactly how much money is being spent currently on stormwater. And then what we have on the right column is the new permit requirements, which includes Joe's estimate based on how much he thinks it will cost to meet these new requirements for the town. So when you look at this on the left-hand side, it's important to remember if Milton continues doing what's in that budget in the left-hand column, the $989,000, that will be out of compliance with the EPA permit that comes out, because that's meeting the 2003 permit, but not all of these new things that I mentioned. So that's important to note. But you can see there's about a $210,000 difference, a $220,000 difference here, between the two budgets. So increased costs because of those, you know, the increased labor and all these different tasks that are now added on. So in a little bit, we're going to hear from Julie about how to pay for, you know, the increased cost, but first, Martin's going to talk a little bit about what's already been done to help meet some of this.
Martin, before you step in, let me just comment on the last slide that Sarah had put up there. So I think what may have escaped the presentation is that this new permit that's due out any week now, as opposed to any year now, are obligating all these new changes moving forward, and it does have a ramping up effect. So we're looking at all So we're looking at only the year-one impacts, and that as the permit matures in year-two and year-three and year-four, there're going to be more and more new elements that become effective and become more costly moving forward. So, you know, don't lose sight of that, these numbers are only FY seventeen numbers, eighteen will be higher, nineteen higher still.
All right, just one, one other thing too, uh, as you're looking at those numbers, the, the first column, the, the existing program only, is what is in, we, we have two budgets going right now because we're anticipating, uh, you know, an override, uh, so all departments, uh, submitted a, what we'll call it a non-contingent budget, assuming an override, uh, would not pass, and, and that's a budget we're gonna have to pare down by about a million four, uh, to, to get it down to anticipated revenues if, if the, uh, override doesn't pass. And then the other one is a, a contingent budget submitted by the departments. So that is what is in those two budgets, the five-hundred-and-eight-thousand and the six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand. The two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand is existing debt service costs that are related to stormwater management that are already in our, our, our debt service schedule, uh, which will increase over the years. Uh, those ones right there are basically, uh, the, uh, the manhole, uh, the, uh, stormdrain, um, project, which is like a ten- or fifteen-year project to...
Right, the, uh, capital planning committee has been, you know, not on a consistent basis, we have the same dollar, but somewhere between three-hundred-thousand and five-hundred-thousand dollars on a recurring basis for the past several years. So the theory is, is as that debt matures and is paid down, you'll be incurring new debt, which just simply rolls in, so...
Correct.
You know, that number represents what would be typical debt service, you know, you know, moving forward.
And then finally, the indirect costs are the, uh, the support departments like accounting and treasury and, uh, the billing and everything else that, uh, that is necessary but, but indirect, uh, you know, not coming directly from the DPW or stormwater. Much like water and sewer, when you look at the warrant, you'll see, um, you know, the funding sources, you know, some of it's coming from indirect costs, uh, uh, which are being, coming through as revenue in the general fund budget and wind up as expenses in the, in the utility budget.
That's correct, that's correct. And, uh, and again, for the indirect costs and increase, uh, in other debts, uh, line, is that, um, excuse me, increase in other departments, no, that's, that's basically just a correlation between what we've currently done with our water and sewer. There may be no real correlation, I did speak with Amy Dexter this, uh, this afternoon, and she says it, it may not necessarily be linear, it may be far more abstract than that, so there's a little more work, but I think it's important to note, we're not talking something on the order of ten thousand, twenty thousand, we're talking something in the order of, you know, a big six-digit number like that.
So, uh, my name is Martin Pillsbury again, M A P C, and, um, I'm gonna just, uh, give an overview of the work that the town and the other members of the Nippon City Stormwater Partnership have been doing over the last two years with the project that M A P C and the Nippon City River Watershed Association have been collaborating on to help provide some assistance to the towns in getting prepared. So, uh, the mission of this partnership, uh, as you can see up here, to reduce the cost and increase the effectiveness of municipal stormwater management through regional cooperation and resource sharing. You know, the idea being that all the towns are facing the same permit, the towns have a lot of similarities to each other, there's some differences, but they have a lot in common, and it would be very ineffective and inefficient for every town to be figuring out and reinventing the wheel of how to grant, respond to this permit separately. There's lots of resources we can develop in common and share among the community, so that's what we've been doing over the last two years. The partner towns were listed there, uh, other towns in the, in the Nippon City Watershed. So one of the, uh, some of the measures that, some of the, uh, resources that we've been able to put together respond to some of those six minimum control measures that you, that Sarah went over a minute ago, one of being public outreach and education. Uh, a whole series of materials have been developed, uh, by the Nippon City River Watershed Association, which, um, you see one example here of a flyer, and these have been put together in such a way they can be printed, they can be put up as PDFs on a website and emailed around, uh, put in social media, et cetera. Uh, and all of these pieces are, um, available to all the member towns to download on a dedicated website we've put up, uh, W-W-W-NipponCityStormwater.org, as well as some, some of the other materials I'll be talking about. And, uh, as Sarah mentioned, there are four different messages that towns will need to develop for different audiences, for residential, for commercial, for others, other categories, and we have the materials that have been developed for all of those categories. So that's, I think, going to be a big leg up in meeting that particular, uh, part of the permit and not having, needing for the communities against a sort of reinventing the wheel for each community. Uh, another piece that Sarah spent a lot of time talking about is this, uh, illicit discharge detection and elimination, uh, and, um, to get started on that, one of the first pieces that communities need to do is to thoroughly map their stormwater systems and to delineate on a map the areas that, uh, the land area that discharges stormwater to each of the outfalls. So you have a hundred and seventy-eight outfalls, as Sarah had mentioned, you see them in the middle column here, in the total number of outfalls in Milton. Uh, and, uh, basically, each one of them has a, has a small area of land around it where the stormwater drains to that particular outfall as opposed to the next, you might think of it as a mini watershed. And, uh, our GIS department at M A P C has developed a, a mapping methodology using LiDAR, which is a complicated and, and, and a much more accurate way of, uh, looking at, uh, topography, uh, to map these out, and, uh, and act, actually, the town of Milton was the first town that we worked on last year, kind of as a pilot to work out the pro, the, the process, and, so as a result, Milton has that mapping already available to it. We've gone on after that to, uh, produce it for three of the other towns in the group, and we hope to continue with that. Another area that, uh, Sarah mentioned was post-construction, uh, by, uh, stormwater management and thinking about things like, um, green infrastructure and low-impact development and ways of managing stormwater more sustainably, and what are the bylaws, ordinances, regulations that need to be looked at in or, in order to facilitate and allow those kinds of approaches to stormwater management. Uh, what we've done through this project is to evaluate, um, the bylaws and other regulations of all of the towns in the, in the depart, partnership. This chart is a, a brief summary of what we found on different categories of bylaws and different aspects, and, and made the recommendations where some of them need to be updated in order to not only comply with EPA's requirement, but to be a stronger, more useful bylaw for the town. Uh, another area that, uh, Sarah mentioned was, uh, retrofits, looking for places where within the town you could retrofit the existing stormwater to have some recharge into the ground of stormwater as opposed to piping it away into the system. And so there are places where the soils are more favorable for absorbing the, the, the stormwater, and our GIS folks have al, also developed a mapping methodology based on soils and, and, and other infrastructure data to overlay that together and identify some of the most likely places where there's favorable conditions to look for, uh, developing those, these kinds of retrofits for, for, uh, stormwater recharge. So there, places you'll be able to look at and prioritize as you do your planning. Good housekeeping was also mentioned, which is, I may have said, good maintenance of the town's own facilities, DPW yard and other, other town-owned facilities, parks, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, what we did through the partnership over the last year is held a couple of workshops. We brought in an outside consultant engineer who's developed these methodologies for other areas, and, uh, they ran a couple of workshops and put together some data management materials that, that our towns were able to use, Milton and the other Nippon City towns. Uh, so that's another piece. And then finally, uh, looking at this issue on stormwater finance options, M A P C has developed a toolkit, a, a, and a, um, stormwater finance starter kit. Julie Conroy, uh, our senior environmental planner is the prime author of that, and I'm gonna ask her to come up here for the next section, uh, to, 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 to talk about this issue in more detail. Uh, but we did develop this, the, the year before we started the regional project, and then, uh, we worked with two communities, Milton being one and Dedham being the other last year, uh, to, uh, begin to pilot out how that applies to the actual community. So some of you may have, uh, been involved in the earlier work that Julie did, um, earlier last year in getting started on this, and, and what we're doing here tonight is a further extension and, and a further more detailed look at, uh, how stormwater finance options will work out with, and what the, some of the options might be for Milton. Uh, so with that, um, I'm actually gonna segue over and turn it over to Julie Conroy, who is our senior environmental planner and who will, um, sort of step through the whole overview of stormwater finance options, stormwater fees, and, and what kind of options the town might consider and, and how much funding, uh, might be able to be raised.
Thank you, Martin.
You want to use the microphone?
Good evening, everyone. I see that you're a little bit in the dark, but I see some familiar faces, so I'm over here, I'm Julie Conroy, and I'm gonna go through a lot of, um, the, uh, nuts and bullets, if you will, of the financing options that we've talked to the community about. Um, I just wanna preface this by saying that, um, you know, um, I'm essentially here to talk to you about how the town can find a way to fund all of the elements, the really important elements that Sarah and Martin have already gone over. Um, this permit is coming, um, and this is work that the town will have to do, so my job is to come in and say, okay, I've, I think that there's a pretty, um, innovative and interesting and important way that you can fund this long-term, um, to make there be real benefits to the community. So, I wanted to start out by just talking about, you know, what, what is a stormwater fee, what do we mean by that? Um, it's essentially, uh, an, a revenue alternative, it's a fee-based, um, but it's, um, allocating your costs for this service, this is a service that the, the town is currently providing, um, but based on, on usage. So, you know, just like water, um, you know, that's based on drinking water use, and just like sewer is based on sewage volume, you know, wastewater that is, is generated, this is the same principle, exactly. Um, this is a fee that would be based on the stormwater volume that comes off of, of every property in town, um, and, you know, Sarah had mentioned what impervious surface is. I'm going to talk, uh, a little bit here about what do we mean by that exactly when we're talking about applying, um, this type of fee. Essentially, um, it is any area that is paved or built upon, um, that prevents rainwater from soaking into the ground. So, um, most of that is our, you know, man-made areas where it's, it's, um, asphalt, pavement, roadway, um, uh, structure, not roadways in this, and we'll, we'll get to that very specifically in the, when we talk about the fee. However, um, these are areas that, uh, water cannot infiltrate into the ground, and therefore it ends up in the, the piping system, um, in the community that's being treated and, and managed currently by the Department of Public Works. Um, there's an official, um, doc, definition by EPA as to what should be included in an impervious surface measurement, um, and that is for certain driveways, buildings, parking lots, patios, as, as shown here. And the, the diagram is just to give you sort of a visual as to what that really represents. And so, the, the fee is based on those areas, um, you know, water running off of those areas. Um, the advantages of having a stormwater fee, um, are that it's a, it's a very predictable and long-term source of funding. Again, these are costs that the town is going to have to incur, um, based on the new permit coming out, and therefore, um, we need to think about this longer term, and, and, uh, there needs to be a way, um, to ensure that the management occurs and all of the requirements of permit are being met. Um, it's a very predictable, uh, source of funding, um, there's a constant revenue, and, and one of the very important elements of this is that will, um, ensure that operation and ma, and maintenance obligations are, are met continuing, um, onward, because those costs can be very high. Um, it's clearly transparent, meaning that, um, those costs are, again, incurred based on the, the use, um, of the rainwater that is, is entering the system, um, and that it, it, these costs are all located in one place. So generally, we talk about, and, and for Milton, we're talking about an enterprise fund and, uh, fund that the, the, um, fees would be put towards, and therefore it would then go directly to, um, the stormwater management program. It's a flexible source of funding, this, the fee can be structured in a number of different ways. We've provided the town with a, a number of different options, and we're going to talk about, um, a few here that we recommend, um, but yet the fee structure can be altered, um, and it is obviously going to cover all or some stormwater costs. Um, it is a very equitable, um, program because, uh, it really makes sure that all users of the system are paying for this service. Um, it really evens it all out, um, ensures that, for example, when you, um, are residential property, that perhaps you're not covering the majority, you know, residential, um, folks are not covering the majority of the costs, um, for other properties in town, like, for example, a large, uh, property that has a, a very big parking lot, um, this ensures that all users of the system are included in this fee. It's a very equitable way to do this. Um, and we wanted to point out that, for example, in Milton, ninety-four percent of the tax revenue is residential, but only seventy-nine percent of impervious cover is residential. So, again, we wanna make sure that we're really leveling this out and that all, um, contributors are, um, are paying this fee. Um, and obviously, it incentivizes a reduction of new and potentially existing impervious cover, so if there are, um, practices put in place, a greener type of practices, green infrastructure, for example, rain gardens, um, bio-retention, um, other, um, elements that, that can, that can incur, then that will be, um, very beneficial to the community and also beneficial to the program. So, it's a very proven approach, I know it may sound somewhat foreign in Massachusetts, however, there are seven or so, um, communities that have put this in place and has, um, been very successful, and some even have been challenged and have been upheld, uh, programs based on the fact that it is authorized by a mass law to be able to have this type of what would call a utility or a fee structure. Um, and it is very similar, again, to the water and sewer type of structure. Um, and even though there's only currently about seven to eight communities, there are at least fifty communities that are looking to put this type of, of fee in practice in different, um, ways. Um, what's not shown here, for example, is North Hampton, they've put in a very innovative, um, fee system, um, that is similar to what we're exploring, uh, here in Milton, um, where it would cover all of the costs of the stormwater fee, there is a credit system that is available, and it's been a very successful model. So there are others that have come before, and there's many others that are on the way. Um, and in addition, nationally, um, there, as you can see that by the graphic, um, this is an approach that's been used by, um, fourteen-hundred jurisdictions in thirty-nine states. It's very, very popular in areas out west, um, in the northern part of the country, um, in, in particular areas that have regional planning, uh, because it works very well across communities as well. And so one, um, one primary example, which is similar to what we've looked at here in Milton, um, but again, just one option, um, is in Redding, Mass. This is an, uh, example of a very successful, uh, stormwater fee structure, um, where they, again, did use an enterprise fund, where, you know, all of the revenue, all of your, um, fees that are, uh, brought into the town are going to be used only for stormwater management purposes and to ensure that you have clean water, um, and that your water bodies are clean. Um, that it, theirs is based on single-family and two-family properties, they pay a flat fee. So it's basically using an average, um, impervious area for those types of properties. And then all other properties pay a forty-dollar a year for each, uh, uh, three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten square foot of impervious, so it's using, again, this average for, um, single-family residential. Um, and then they applied, uh, a specific fee. Um, they have also looked at this for a property by parcel-by-parcel basis, and that's, um, where they've determined, um, what they want to use, uh, the rate, the forty dollars a year rate for. Um, nonprofit municipal and other exempt properties, they are included in this fee, um, because they are contributors and have impervious surfaces, and that their fee, um, they have built in some flexibility, and, and we would recommend, thinking about that, um, that there is credits that, that can be put in place, um, to alter the fee, um, structure and also the management program for the town, um, but also they've admitted to being able to change the fee rate based on, um, new data or any additional information that might, might come forward. Um, so for us, we, we thought a lot about what's been going on across the country, we've talked to a lot of people, um, we've done, uh, work in other communities, and we dug our hands in and, and took, took a look at the data for Milton. Um, as Martin mentioned, fortunately, um, your community was able to have its own aerial photography done, so it's not based on, um, the statewide system, um, that's a great, uh, data source, however, this, your, your data source, um, for where the impervious coverages are, is even newer than what the state has, and you, you have two thousand and three, thirteen data. Um, we've worked closely with the DPW folks, um, to make sure that what we're looking at, we understand what, what those impervious covers are, that they are truly, uh, rooftops, um... understand what those impervious covers are, that they are truly rooftops, driveways, et cetera, and have dug into the data even to look at specific parcels and make sure that we sort of cleaned up what we saw and made sure that it's accurate. But I will say, there is more of that to be done. What we're presenting tonight is an example of what this fee could be, and there is a great opportunity for us to dig a little deeper and make alterations as needed. And obviously, it's based on stormwater costs on a year-to-year basis. We've used a cost estimate that Joe has put together, and we put out a very draft feasibility report back in the spring to give the folks in town just a flavor of how we went through this analysis. And then, we've moved forward a bit on that, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So for the town meeting article that would need to be put forward, essentially, really what needs to be done is to have an authorization of this possibility. We're not at all talking about having a specific type of rate or fee structure put in place at all. We're just pushing for and encouraging there to be an opportunity for this type of fee structure to be put in place in the future. We find it to be, as I mentioned before, something that's very, very important for new permit requirements that are coming up. This is things that will have to be done. And so, for the next steps...
Just give two seconds.
I think we went from that to here, okay. So what would have to happen after that? After this article is adopted, hopefully, again, for the authorization only of being able to have this fee? We need to do a little bit more work. As I mentioned, we'll have to determine what property types should be subject to the fee and what structure, what rate that is. What type of fee structure would be preferred? We provided the town with a bunch of different options, and they can be altered as well. You can have, you know, you don't have to choose from one. You could have, you know, a hybrid, if you will, of one, and I'll show you that example. And, you know, we do need to nail down, you know, how much revenue is needed for this program to ensure that there's an adequate amount of revenue to cover all of the permit costs and also, quite frankly, ensure that water quality is improved across the community. And then, there would need to be, again, looking back at the data and to confirm that we have all of the properties properly categorized, meaning that we're looking at properties by their type, as mentioned. So, you know, making sure that a residential, single-family home is truly that that we're looking at and that's been categorized accurately versus, you know, commercial properties that they've been categorized properly so that we can make sure that this calculation is spot-on. We would like to hold public meetings to really educate the public about what this is and how it would benefit the community, and then, think about, you know, the administrative process. We've talked a little bit about how in Milton, you're lucky to have a really great and robust and very proactive DPW department. Perhaps that's the place that this would be administered, and that's something to be determined. And so, again, we went through a number of different options, thinking very much about how this could work best here in Milton, and we've come up with an example just to highlight merely how this could work. And this is what we're calling a hybrid fee structure because we've used pieces of one option and another. So what we thought, perhaps, to illustrate what this, how this could work would be to show you that there's a way to include all properties except public roads. So I stopped on that before. This is something that's not typically done with a stormwater fee is to include the roads. The impervious surfaces that are within each parcel is a direct representation of the amount of stormwater that is generated into the system. All of that water that comes into the system is being serviced and treated by the town. Roadways are in addition to that. However, one of the things that would need to be looked through is the ownership of those roads. So there are some town roads, there are some highway, a mass highway, and even DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation. So that would have to be an additional analysis to be looked at. However, most of the time, the fees are looked at very specifically to include properties. But, so our example here is not including those. We're looking at properties. We are, what we did was to divide the revenue goal by the total impervious cover to find the fee per square foot. So essentially, what that means is we took a look at the, how much impervious cover on a square-foot basis for the entire community there was, and then, we took what the options for the revenue program. So first was to, for example, let's think of how much there would need to be, the gap in funding to the permit. And then, the other option is, okay, we have taken a very hard look at what the new cost of the permit will be for the community, and that would be the program of 1.2 million, as Sarah had described. So we took those two options and analyzed it in such a way. Then, what we did is we divided the 7,126 single-family homes into two tiers. So, we wanted to be sure that, you know, a larger, a property that has a larger amount of impervious surface and therefore, greater amount of stormwater runoff was accounted for, and then, also, a smaller property that has a smaller amount of impervious surface. So we had a median, and then, we tiered it into top and bottom, essentially, just to make it simple for folks to understand and to see how this works. Then, we also, so that's single-family residential. We also have the commercial, recreational, and tax-exempt industrial properties. Those classifications, we did on a parcel-by-parcel basis merely, primarily because there were a smaller number, first off, of those properties, and we were able to take that calculation and see, for example, you know, X amount of commercial properties, what would that, what is that impervious cover and what would that fee be? So essentially, we did three things. We did the single-family residential. We found the top and bottom tier of how much impervious cover those properties generated. And then, we did a parcel-by-parcel calculation for the rest of the properties. So that's what this slide is essentially explaining. Again, we took these two revenue scenarios. So are we going to fund only the new costs from, you know, the gap, if you will, from what the Department of Public Works is currently paying for in stormwater management to what we feel could be what is needed in addition for the new permit, or looking at funding the entire stormwater program together? And those are the two options there. I don't know if this would be a surprise, but it is rather a small, we found 0.14 cents per quarter, per square foot. So for every square foot of impervious cover, it would be .14 cents a quarter. And I'll show you what that looks like on a quarterly basis per property. And for the full program, it is .78 cents per quarter, per square foot. So, just getting back to the parcel types, again, looking at these parcels, I wanted to point out that here's how, if you can see, that we tiered the two, single-family residential and what those average impervious covers came out to be. I think it's important to see that, that for the smaller, you have obviously less impervious cover in average. And also, it's interesting to point out that for a smaller portion, the impervious cover total is less, of course, as well. So, when we're looking at these across the property types, you can sort of get a sense as to, you know, the general range of what these coverages are. And then, showing you what this comes out to be for these two scenarios for a quarterly rate is shown here. So, looking at the single-family smaller, now, it would be the same across each of the quarters because, again, that is a determined flat, somewhat flat fee, if you will. For the larger properties, it's $7 a quarter. And for the other categories, obviously, there is a range because, again, we were looking at a parcel-by-parcel basis. So the lower quarter, the quarter bill for the lower commercial property is $4, moving all the way up to the maximum fee of $339. And tax-exempt, also, there are some properties that have very, very little impervious cover, and they would have zero to a dollar of fee, but yet, moving up to a tax-exempt property that has a lot of impervious cover, perhaps it's a very large area of parking, that fee would be about $676. This is only to fund the gap between, again, what is currently being paid and what the new permit would be. When you move into funding an entire program, the costs are actually also very reasonable in terms of each of the impervious coverage that we've shown, which is here showing the smaller is $16 a quarter. For a larger, more contributing property, $40 a quarter, and so forth and so on. For the other properties, we do, again, have this range of this smaller percentile, the median of what that type of property would be and upward to the max. Again, this is showing an example. This is not what is to be sort of approved, if you will, at this point in time. It is to show merely what this type of structure would look like, and what would need to be done, again, would be to have the authority to think about putting this type of system in place via regulation. So, I know that probably was a lot of information to absorb, and so, we'd be more than happy to take questions, any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie, and everybody else. Before we start, I just want to make it clear that right now, we're just talking about costs that, right now, we're in the operating budget. You know, we're not really talking about adding any new costs that aren't already mandated to be incurred. So these either exist inside the operating budget. If they exist inside the operating budget, approximately 94%, they get funded by real estate taxes. Approximately 94% of the real estate taxes are residential, and, you know, the rest are commercial, and none of them are tax-exempt. So, for the most part, you know, the residential homeowners pay for this cost. To the extent we move it out, you know, we get a chance to, you know, a little bit more fairly share it based upon, you know, who's contributing to the stormwater problem. Unfortunately, there's no, we can't put a meter on stormwater and measure it. It's impossible to do. It'd be nice if we could. So, you know, any mechanism we have isn't totally perfect. It's the best we could do, but that's kind of the idea of it. We're looking at two budgets this year. I don't know who saw the last selectmen's meeting, but we did go over our first pass at the non-contingent budget, and based upon the bare-bones budgets that were submitted by the departments, and the estimate of revenue currently, we're about a million four short. So we've got a deficit of about a million four, which we're going to have to close somehow. That either means, since well over 80% of the budget's payroll, that, you know, probably means positions. To the extent we can move stormwater out of that budget, potentially 700,000, that cuts that budget shortfall in half. If we do wind up getting an override passed, my suggestion would be that whatever the override is, we reduce it by whatever we move out of the operating budget into stormwater if stormwater passes. So if we move a million dollars out of the operating budget, whatever the override we said we needed with stormwater in it should be reduced by a million dollars. So, that's the starting point, and if anybody has questions, feel free to come up, I guess, to the podium.
Question? Okay. Bylaws that you talked about, one was to prohibit illicit discharges and one for requiring erosion control best management practices. What is the timeframe on needing to do that? Is that something we should be doing for May or for an October town meeting, or do we already have any bylaws in place that address those?
We have chapter 21 of these town bylaws, which is a stormwater bylaw. It is weak. It doesn't fully comply with even the first 2003 permit. It would require a complete rewrite of the existing stormwater bylaw, and you could do it in such a way to have sub-chapters or sub-paragraphs to it to address these other items that are going to be required. There is a ramping-up requirement. The permit has a seven-month, excuse me, a six-month phase in which pushes us into August at the soonest, assuming it's out on February 1. So the reality is, it's fought for a fall town meeting.
Okay. So your expectation, Joe, would be to keep working on that leading up to the summer?
We have a draft, we have draft bylaws for these already ready to put out, and it's not talking about.
And that would include the whole complete revamp that you mentioned?
It obviously needs to be tailored specifically to the new permit, so we haven't rolled it out to see when the new permit comes out. But we, there's a model bylaw that we worked with through this somewhat collaborative. I think it's important to say that, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued what was called a Community Innovation Challenge Grant several years ago. Applied for it once, didn't receive it, and what NEPA and Metropolitan Area Planning Council sought was, to be innovative, was to congregate and to really cooperate and to create a group, and we all did of those communities. So this was really done as a collaboration, and we got that grant, which is what's been able to fund all this work we've done upfront. So part of that work product was looking at the bylaws, and they were, you know, planners both from NEPA and through NAPC that looked at, certainly, our bylaw in detail and pointed out the shortcomings and have all these new requirements that we likely to include. So we're well on the way to meeting that fall town meeting deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I guess we're going to use this microphone up here because the podium does not have a microphone, so if you could come up here, that'd be great.
Thanks. Brian Furze, I'm a member of the town meeting, and I'm a member of the planning board as well. I have several questions. I'm just going to read them all, and then I'll head back to my seat. One question was where municipal impervious areas are reflected in those numbers that you gave? Are they in the exempt category, in the commercial category, or are they just not there? Another question about the fee that would be applied, is there an appeal opportunity there? And if so, how does that, what staff person would account for, who would deal with that appeal? And is there a way to mitigate it so that we don't get flooded with appeals? Curious as to what the consequence is of non-compliance with the EPA permit, certainly not advocating for it, but just wondering what the consequence is. And just lastly, wanted to know if the impervious area map that's been done to date could be available online so people can understand how that would impact their own properties. Thank you.
I'll take the first one first. I'm Joe Lynch, Director of Public Works. I think everybody in the room must know me, even though it's snowing, I don't need to be outside right now.
Yeah.
I think we're done for the night. EPA consequence, every violation is $25,000 each day constitutes a separate violation. So every day you are in violation is $25,000 and mounting. I dare you to find a community that's ever gotten that, but I equally dare you to go to communities such as Pittsburgh and Haverhill and look at the hundreds of thousands of fines that were assessed to them under the first phase permit, where they were, in fact, assessed for flagrant violations. You know, I think it was pointed out that Milton's well above the curve, in front of the curve on our old permit. We've done a lot of great things. There were some communities who did absolutely nothing, and that's the ones they went after. But there's new permits, there's a whole new game. This IDDE is, you know, especially in paired waterways, if our TMDL is, in fact, bacteria and we don't go out and dry weather sample and wet weather sample all of these outfalls at least twice a year, twice a year, and then chase those problems upstream and identify where they are, that's a clear violation of, I would consider it flagrant. So I think we'd be, and that's a big...
we'd be, and that's a big, and that's a big number in, in the budget moving forward. So that's, you know, I wouldn't roll those dice on, on the fines. Impervious area in, in mapping, prior to this even being an initiative, John Thompson, a town engineer, just raise your hand for the folks who may not know who you are. John's a great engineer, great scientist, and Betty Ann, a great, great thinker when it comes to planning. In 2003, as, as all of us in the industry saw the first NIPTS permit come out, we all kind of wrung our hands and slowly got used to it, and thank God that even though the five years is the valid permit date, this discussion has been going on with EPA, and with Mass DEP, and with various regional planning commissions, and with various water resource authorities, all across the country, to renegotiate just how onerous this new permit will be. The reason it's been delayed for seven years is working out, as uncomfortable as this is, is, is far, far less onerous than it looked five or six years ago. So, you know, this is what we're getting. Recognizing that, our engineering department, you know, has, has been gathering data and doing things. We've been cleaning our cash basins once every, the goal once every three years, we're cleaning about fifty percent a year. We're sweeping our streets once a year, which is better than most communities, but now it's going to become twice a year. But more importantly, administratively, our planning, looking at our regulations, and more importantly, when we, when we roll out our GIS, we get a flyover, including the LiDAR, radar photography, to be able to recognize, knowing that impervious is where it's going to go. Very good, very accurate, I'm not going to use the word precise, because it's not precise. And that's an important distinction, because on that impervious calculation, you can be precise. We could go out there and measure every square foot, keep an inventory, and every time they apply for a building permit, or anybody seals their driveway, or builds a deck, or adds a pool, we'd have to have this whole mechanism, we could do it. That precision in the end, what are you going to gain for it? For the bureaucracy of creating a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in annual cost, to only pass that, that cost on into a fee program, what are you gaining? So what we looked more towards was the, the equity of, of a statistical analysis of impervious area, the average house, the small house, the large house, and then breaking from the median, breaking left and right of that, and then looking at all those other properties, and particularly those properties that aren't paying anything for the maintenance stormwater, and that's the tax exempt. So that's how we looked at that. So the impervious calculation's based on that methodology, and it's, it's rock solid. And we looked to John to answer the last question, which I think was, putting the impervious maps online. Yes, we can. Will you know what you're looking at? And, and can we, sure, we can put it up.
Technically already up in, in the form of our online GIS map, where you can look at the various layers, you know, driveways, sidewalks, walkways, structures, those types of things are already up on the map.
And, and again, this is based on a 2012 flyover, 2013 analysis that you guys did. Needs maintenance. I mean, anybody built an addition, new driveway, new patio, since 2012, it's not going to show up. So you're going to need to go out and re-fly LiDAR and re-update periodically, probably every five years, not much unlike what an assessor does when he does the revaluation every three years. So, you know, it's, it's those types of things. So it is online, but I'm not so certain the average user would know how to manipulate their way through it. But, John, you want to just give the website under the microphone, so folks at home know what that, it's a townofmilton.org slash publicworks.
Yeah, essentially, there's a link to it on the, on the Town of Milton homepage, so if you go to-
If you just Google Milton GIS map, you'll get it too.
Sure, sure. On the left side of, of the town homepage, the online GIS mapper is, is how it's referred to.
Now, one thing I just wanted to mention, Brian, the appeal process, the mechanism is going to be very similar for billing, it would be part of the water and sewer billing, it would just be in addition to the water and sewer billing, that would most likely be the mechanism, and the, the appeal process would be similar to, you know, what the appeal process would be for a, a water and sewer bill. The, the difference, though, is for the residential properties, it's a flat fee, it's a single fee. So it's not based upon one person's impervious surface, it's based upon the total of all of the impervious surfaces within that residential class, there's two residential, small and large, so everybody gets the same bill in that class. So it, it would be difficult for one person to say, you know, I have two hundred square feet less impervious surface, it, it wouldn't matter.
I think there is one, one other question in terms of our calculations, Brian, that you had asked, which is about the tax exempt, were municipal properties included? Yes, they were.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and that number is about, because Ian, I think, did for, it, it's about seventy thousand dollars approximately would be the billing for the schools and town buildings.
Mr. Trean, during the presentation, that Star, that put those digits for non-impervious, that the Star said that it's exempted for parcels that had impervious impervious, that by the last term.
Yes. Wait, so it, we did not include the parcels that had absolutely none.
Anybody else? Nobody's got any questions? Okay, we're, we're going to roll this out again in a couple-
Twenty-seventh of June.
Yes.
I have no questions.
No? Right ahead.
Sounds disappointed, remember.
See, all the way here, the snow.
So, Joe, I just wanted to know, the extra costs you talked about in the presentation, did that include extra sweep, street sweepings?
It does. What it basically includes is, is one administrative person in year one to carry out all the additional administrative work, and keep track of all the data, and all the analysis, and the reporting requirements that are going to be augmented in the first year. It includes twice a year street sweeping, and it also carries out some of the, some of the other permit requirements that are simply more robust than the first time around. What it also takes credit for is, rather than taking all those costs that we used to do, you know, in, in-house, is now using these regional tools that we put together through the collaborative, and, and making use of that was, you know, at savings, at cost savings. So that, the difference is, is in the first year, is recognizing just those additional passes, which, which is a, for all intents and purposes, complete compliance with year one of the permit.
Okay, that's more of an answer than I, I really just wanted to know if you had already factored in the extra-
The street sweep, oh yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been watching this permit roll out for seven years. Seven years. There's a lot more.
One other thing I'd like to mention, too, is that stormwater management does greatly lend itself to regionalization in other parts of the country, that is, in fact, what does happen is it's more on a regional basis than it is on a, a city or town-by-town basis. Right now, there are only eight or nine communities in Massachusetts that have stormwater management utilities. If we pass it, we'll be, you know, one of the first, above and beyond those. If regionalization does occur, it's difficult in Massachusetts to try and get anybody to regionalize anything, but, you know, we'd certainly be in a good position to be the leader in spearheading that regionalization.
Top people in my direction, most of other parts of the country, when you're dealing with county form of governments or larger regional forms of government, a lot of things like water resources and sewerage and stormwater, roadway networks for that matter, are administered through that regional county form of government. Massachusetts used to have strong county government, they don't anymore. So I'm not so certain that the full program could ever be regionalized, but recognizing those things that we all have to do exactly the same is exactly how we were able to convince the Commonwealth to fund this grant, is that creating such a collaborative for all of this public education, and understanding how bylaws can really take on a model and work together. So none of us are reinventing the wheel, there's a lot of efficiencies that have come out of that. But in, in the longer run, I mean, towns are going to have separate demands on how streets are swept, and this, and how their systems were maintained historically, and compared to each other, and are not maintained historically, and, you know, regionalizing how it is you manage the actual physical infrastructure, far, far more complicated.
Yeah, definitely.
If I may, I would add that we've thought a little bit about this, there's, there's a lot of areas between no regionalization and full regionalization, and, and it may be that once all the towns are doing more, because they have to under this permit, there's certain contracts that they would each be letting that could be aggregated, and NA PC already does this for certain other things, like purchasing asphalt, for instance, we, we have to do something to, you know, get them to slow down on that. But basically, there may be things that can be done at a cost savings by aggregating, group purchasing for either services, training, equipment, special equipment that may need it, lab services, lots of things that are going to be coming in, that each town, if you buy it one by one, you'll, you'll pay more. You always give a little flexibility and need to get up, come up with something that all the towns in a particular group would agree on, who the contractor is or whatever, but there may, it's a little bit down the road, but when you have all the towns up and running and doing more, there may be some regional collaboration that's a little more robust than what we're doing right now, which is like planning and models.
So can I ask, within the NA PC right now, in the last time we, we had met, there was an indication that Denham was, was looking at this model as well. Who else is, is, is starting to really, you know, get in gear on this, you know, within this regional group?
About nine partners.
Canton.
Canton, actually, they, they had a consultant come in to help them run through some of these same kind of analyses. And I think, I think some of the towns beyond the Wisconsin group, in the greater metro, I think some of the north shore towns are being, yeah.
Oh, yeah, outside of this particular watershed, there are a number of communities that have approached us, but within the watershed, Canton, Denham, west coast has-
And, I mean, if you talk to certain people in certain towns, it may not be the last word, but if you talk to someone in one department or another, there is interest in it, in Foxborough and other places, depending on who you talk to. It, it has to get to the point where, you know, the, obviously, the town leadership is really behind you, to where you say they're actually moving towards doing it. As the costs hit home in all of these towns, they're all going to be struggling with, how do you pay, the same thing you're doing here, how do you pay for this? You know, the costs aren't going away, the question is, how do we pay for it? Do we, do we really want these extra costs to be, keep staying on our property tax base, or do we want to start shift? And that's, I think many towns are going to be facing this.
I think it's a great point, you know, this isn't sexy, it's not romantic, this is an ed reform, because we don't have kids in, you know, in the school system, what we have is a federal mandate that we must carry out, completely analogous to ed reform, yet it doesn't fail the attention. So rolling these types of public opportunities out to, to let the people know how important this and what the impact is, is very, very crucial.
Hello, Cheryl Taggias, town meeting member and member of the planning board. Does this new permitting require a net reduction in the volume that's put into the system, particularly with new construction or major renovation?
No. It, it does two things with regards to development. The same stormwater standards that we've used in the past continue to apply, except that the treatment of the first one inch of rain runoff, which it's hard for a person not in the industry to visualize, but that is extremely robust. Typically, construction sites need to, need to treat a much larger storm event, but now we have to treat it even in the smallest storm events, which is going to require, you know, construction managers, planners, architects, and landscape architects at the facility moves through to be able to treat those types of storms. So it, it requires a more robust treatment, but not a reduction in runoff. Standards can be exceeded, so you can reduce runoff, but you've got to be careful, because this whole thing is based on water quality and water resource, so if you start reducing runoff, you're really losing, losing the feed of hydrology that's feeding these very bodies of water that depends on seeing the flow at the beginning. So there's a careful balance between the two.
And then, one other question, you mentioned Jamaica Pond, are there requirements for that? So if Pope's Pond, Turner's Pond, other bodies of water in Milton reach unsafe levels, is there a requirement to report that to the, residents of the town?
Don't know the answer to that, I don't know the answer to that. There not public recreation swimming beaches as Jamaica Pond is.
Yeah.
And it was closed, you know, through the public swimming aspect, but people, we know fish, you know, most of it. I'm a cat-released fisherman anyway, I only eat what I really believe, I want to eat, I don't want to eat anything out of Teresa Pond.
But I have seen families fishing, and people touch the water, obviously, so it, I think it, and where Turner's is next to an elementary school, if it's not part of the mandate, I think perhaps we should consider a, a reporting system in the town as we look at this.
The town could always do that on its own, whether or not the federal government is requiring.
Yeah, and actually, I'm not sure, it looks like Dave Perrios was in the room, and he did have to leave early. So the park recreation department manages Turner's Pond, but I, I know that they're concerned about that, I know they're concerned with the waterfall, the waterfall population that's there, but, you know, there, there were other things than, than toxic algae for, even just elevated bacteria is not really good.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, we'll just take a quick break while, we'll take a quick break while, dear.
I don't think Emily's here yet.
All right, we're going to skip to item nine of our agenda, which is the Capital Improvement Planning Committee 2017 recommendations, and I think Amy Dex is here to kind of go through those for us.
So, Mr. Truman, I, I have a recusal issue on anything bonded, we have both bonded and non-bonded, how are you, you're going to have a separate discussion, or how are you planning on doing this?
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, we can do that. So you want to talk about the non-bonded first, so that you can-
If we could, and then, yeah, but I think, since it's a total number, I think I can just vote on the total, if that's what, if you're planning on doing separate votes.
No, I was, I was planning just on one vote, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so I was just going to give you a little bit of information of the types of, or level of requests that came into the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for FY17. We ask all departments, boards, and committees submit, submit a five-year plan on capital. So this year's included fiscal years 2017 to 2021. Total capital requests submitted totaled approximately eighty-three million dollars for that five-year period. Two very large projects included in that, approximately forty million dollars for the DPW facility, and approximately thirty million dollars to rebuild the fire stations in town. The remaining balance related to equipment, roadways, DPW projects, things of that nature. For FY17, the total requests were approximately thirty-six million dollars. Of that thirty-six million dollars, thirty million dollars of that was the fire stations. Of the thirty-six million dollars requested for FY17, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee has submitted to the Board of Selectmen a total of two million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars worth of capital items. We broke that down into two categories, one that we're recommending that would be items that we would recommend to bond. That number is two million, sixty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars. And then the second classification of items that we're recommending are those items that we, the committee felt would be better if they were funded as one-time items with free cash. Those totaled seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The way-
The D- okay.
Yeah, okay. The way the committee looked at this, one thing that the committee spent a lot of time on this year was trying to set up some strategies and some policies of how to approach eighty-three million dollars in requests. We need some metrics on how to prioritize items, how to determine if it's best to bond those items versus try to fund it with free cash. So the main thing that we talked about, or one of the things that we talked about, was if it's an item that's, has a short useful life, which a lot of the technology requests, like computers, servers, things like that, the mass general hours allow you to bond it over five years. Does that make sense to bond something over five years? Probably not. If it's a small dollar item, does that make, you know, if you have a hundred thousand that can be bonded over twenty years, or fifty thousand that can be bonded over twenty years, does that really make sense? Maybe not. or fifty thousand that can be bonded over twenty years, does that really make sense? Maybe not. So we tried to look at not only the dollar amount of the request, but the useful life as well as the nature of the item. So within this recommendation for non-bonded capital items, you'll see there's a lot of, I condensed them all to one line item, but there's a, one line here that's for facility schools, for building repairs, that includes all the different schools. There's a detailed list behind that totaling sixty-three five hundred dollars. And then there's another line item similar to that, where is it? On the town side. Well, those, the paving and curving repairs and the kitchen equipment, there's some items within the requests that we felt were more repairs in nature or maintenance in nature, and historically, over the last couple of years, the warrant committee and town meeting has appropriated monies in the consolidated facility budget as one-time items. This would be similar to that. They were just submitted to the capital committee and then, so I think there's a little bit of overlap probably there of what the warrant committee is looking at. So that when I present this to the warrant committee, I'll also talk about that, so that they know it's not in addition to what may have been requested already to them. So as far as those policies and the strategy, we haven't finalized anything, we're still working on that. We wanted to try to get the recommendation into the Board of Selectmen and the warrant committee earlier than previous fiscal years. So we, our plan is to jump back on that and continue to meet in the later part of the fiscal year, so that when we go into the summer, we're ready, we know what the strategy is going to be. And I assume Tom, that we would probably ask the board for some input on what we decide on that. Not sure how that works, or if.
I think to the extent that their overall policies, yeah, the Board of Selectmen would be the one that would review those. Yeah, so the capital committee could put them forth and the selectmen would review them.
So also, this, this recommendation results on the bonded side. It's still, we're trying to stay within that one point nine percent of the levy that we've talked about, that we've used over the last several years. This puts us a little over that for the first couple of fiscal years, but over the five-year period, we actually have some additional capacity to borrow more, so that when we go to meet next year in some of the out years, that we still have room. So I guess that is about it.
Yeah, unless Katie wants to recuse herself and.
Well, can I ask, are we going to finish up the non-bonded first? I just had questions about two of them. So D P W, what does urban forest mean? Is that a vehicle?
No, so it's, it's trees, island improvements, so it wasn't just, sometimes, and historically, the last couple of years, he's put requests that will just say trees, but this is more than trees, it's the island improvements, it's trees, I forget what else it is.
Shade trees, you mean?
It's not the Copland money, it's not those trees.
It's not just trees, and he asked for a lot more than that, but knowing that he received some monies from the Copland Foundation, we couldn't really afford to give him everything he was asking for.
Right, but it's not tree replacements, it's, it's more, if they have to remove a tree, it's that kind of stuff.
Okay, and then, this is the town clerk, but maybe you can speak to it, Amy, preservation of permanent records, what does that mean?
Well, she has, the town clerks required by law to maintain certain books and records of the town forever. And some of the books dating back to the early, like, I think it was the eighteen hundreds, I might have that wrong. The type of paper, the type of ink that they were printed on, it's deteriorating and it's disintegrating. So she needs to preserve those so that they don't get worse. The actual amount is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which she and I discussed a couple times, what's the best way to approach it? Do you ask for all of the money upfront? So what she ended up doing was she put in a request of a ten-year plan for fifteen thousand dollars. All the committee has recommended, recommending at this point is year one. This can get her, I think it was maybe five or six of the books done.
But will they be put, will they be preserved electronically then?
No, no, she has to keep the hard copy records, it puts them in.
So it's not photographing.
These plastic sleeves, no. But she did, I also had a discussion with her that the way she's binding the books now, the type of paper that is being printed on, the type of ink, it, the quality is so much better than back then, that it's not like every year she's going to have to. She just needs to get, I forget how many books she said she had, I haven't, in my details, yeah.
I was just wondering if we were going to some kind of a digital or an image-based reservation.
It's my understanding she can't do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I will be recused and come back when you're finished with the bonded.
Okay, because there are some big items on bonding, and I guess the one I think we do want to talk a little bit about, Amy, is the playground equipment.
Yes.
Just in general terms, Tom, I'll let you talk about that.
Well, the Parks Department this year submitted a request for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for playground improvements. This is just to improve what they have, it is not to replace what they have, it's to fix what they have. This would be focused on the playgrounds, I believe, that are at the parks, not at the schools. So like Kelly Fields, Shields Park, Andrews. But in no means is this enough to go out and replace all of that equipment. It's to replace certain pieces, to fix certain pieces.
Get them up to standards.
Yes, and this was actually their number, originally it was their number two priority, and they shifted it to their number one priority.
Now, there is a group out there right now that is trying to raise money, significant money, to replace a lot of that playground equipment, with new equipment, which we'd love to see happen. And if that does occur, you know, this could perhaps be a, used in conjunction with that as maybe a, you know, a matching contribution.
I would hope that it would be, and that, you know, the work wouldn't be completed, and then they raise some money and then, you know, redid it.
Yeah, that's why it's, yeah, it's important that they work with that group. If this item gets approved, I would hope that that would happen, that this would, to help fund the replacement.
Yeah, I think that's great, it's a great partnership that you have, you have people who are out there, residents, who are concerned, who want to help, and are giving their time. So I think working with the Parks Department and something like that could be very beneficial.
And you'll also notice there's a fire engine there, and that's part of a program that we started five years ago to do cycle replacements of, is it every five years?
Yeah, it's one, to replace an engine, one engine every five years. So if you recall, we did one.
So it's about fifteen-year life out of an engine, and then the, basically, there's always one reserve engine, so the reserve engine keeps switching over, so the newest one becomes a reserve. But the one that goes offline becomes a reserve, and then you retire the reserve engine.
It's also important to notice on the recommended bonded items that there's an item in there for roadways for four hundred thousand dollars. The actual request was a million three hundred and twenty, and that's in addition to the chapter ninety funds. Unfortunately, we can't afford to fund that much annually, so we did our best to include, you know, something he felt he could do some significant work with that. Also, the surface drains, that item relates to the stormwater management that the group was talking about earlier. Historically, that's been five hundred thousand, but again, we've trimmed that a little bit to fit into the debt model and to be able to recommend some of these other items that we also felt were important.
Now, if the stormwater utility does pass, that three hundred thousand, we'll probably vote to move that off of this request, because it would become part of the utility.
Well, I think you would still need to go through the capital committee for the recommendation, but the debt service, when it's bonded, wouldn't, would go into that utility rather, so it would come out of the one point nine percent calculation.
Yes, yeah.
It's, one other thing that I think is important to mention is historically, we have bonded in February every other year. So the last time we bonded was February of fourteen, I believe. What we did was we worked with the town treasurer, we worked with our financial advisors, and we felt it would be beneficial to push that schedule off until August of sixteen. So we're not going out with a bond issue this February. We're going to postpone that until August of two thousand sixteen, which means the impact of the bonding on this and the debt service won't have a significant impact on two thousand seventeen. It really won't hit until fiscal year two thousand eighteen and nineteen.
Amy, on the school portion, the phone system, at two hundred and seventy-one thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, can you just explain to me, do they currently have an old phone system, and what are the true benefits of this new system for them?
It's an analog system that they have right now.
Yeah, and before you were on the board, David, we, the committee and town meeting approved a similar request for the town side. And because it was such a large project, we couldn't afford to do it all at once. So they waited, how long ago was that? That was at least three to five years ago, so they've waited a long time.
So they do, they're overdue, yeah.
Yeah, they're well overdue for that.
And I don't believe the schools are on voiceover internet.
No, I don't think so.
So this would be a voiceover internet system. You shaking your head, this is not, okay, yeah. Let's see, other than that, you've got the dump trucks, and that's going to be, the average age of the D P W trucks is pushing twenty years.
Yeah, it's over twenty.
And so there were a bunch of requests for trucks in there.
Right, and even acknowledging the very generous gift of the Copland Foundation, that was a lot of snow removal type equipment. So this is an actual dump truck that would still be able to be used for snow removal, but some other things too. And like Tom said, their fleet is extremely old.
Yeah, I've gone through the fleet list, it's exceptionally old.
So this is an attempt, over the next five years, to try and get some of those trucks replaced, and then go into a cycle replacement if we can.
He had, I believe, for FY seventeen, he requested maybe four.
Yeah.
And we're recommending one, so.
I think that's about it. So I think if we're going to vote, we can have Katie back, because they're just going to vote a total anyways. We're done talking, done voting. Okay, so we've got two million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars of recommended capital improvements.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for FY two thousand seventeen, departmental capital needs, as presented in the memo from the committee dated January eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
And can I just mention one other thing? That's not, I just want, this is general fund. We still have to, the committee still has to take under consideration water and sewer enterprise fund requests. We usually do that after, we just wanted to get this to the warrant committee so that they could have it for when they're balancing the budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, back to item seven on the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Hurley, could you do item ten while Amy?
Oh, sure, yeah, okay, that's a good idea. Item ten is approval of an extension of the contract for Powers and Sullivan, who are our auditors, for the seventeen and eighteen? Is it seventeen and eighteen, or just?
It's for seventeen with an option for the eighteen or nineteen, so that, did I say that right? With an option for seventeen and eighteen, so it's for the year ended June two thousand sixteen, which we would pay for in fiscal seventeen. With an option to extend two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, just in case the audit committee isn't up and running, you know, next fall. But this year, we're just asking.
Hopefully it will be, yes.
Right, so we're just asking for a one-year extension at this point, and then we can address it again later.
They held the price pretty much the same.
Pardon?
They held the price pretty much the same.
They do.
So I'll move that we award the contract for audit services for the town for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, to Powers and Sullivan of Wakefield, Massachusetts, in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars, and to authorize the town administrator to sign any related documents on the board's behalf.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, now back to item seven.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Which is a conference with Emily Ennis of the Planning Board for the presentation of the articles for February two thousand sixteen. And I hear you were behind a snowplow?
Yes. Thank you for your patience, all of you. I was at a client meeting earlier, and as I came out and came on to Randolph Avenue, I realized I was not only behind a single snowplow, I was behind three of them coming down Randolph.
Was it that much snow out there?
Well, you know, the funny thing is they weren't staggered to take up both lanes, all three of them were in the same lane, so. I do not believe they were town plows, by the way, so, but it did slow the trip, so thank you for your patience. We had our public hearing on the zoning articles for February's special town meeting last week, and found out the next day that the audio did not survive, there was a technical glitch. So I just wanted to report to you our votes on them, on the article to alter three N, the zoning bylaws. The Planning Board voted to send it forward with the language that we, additional language that we discussed at the last meeting. On the article to alter three J, we sent it forward to the warrant committee and town meeting with no changes to the language to the article. And on the article for, the citizens' article for the petition for the ICE house, we voted no, to send it back to the, recommend that be sent back to the Planning Board. I attended the warrant committee meeting the next night, and they have voted, they may already have presented to you, so I hope I'm not jumping the gun. But for the moment, they've voted a no recommendation at this time. The Planning Board is meeting again on the twenty-first, and the idea is that we would continue to work with the proponents to see if there are any changes that might change our recommendation. In general, Planning Board members were generally supportive of the project and of the idea of the project, but for four different reasons. Four different members voted against, again, to send it back to us because of concerns about the zoning. The broad difference was the idea of zoning that is more general to the town versus zoning that is site-specific, which is something that's been coming up over the last few months in our discussion of zoning. But individual members also had concerns about the requirements of the zoning itself, in particular, how specific or how general the various dimensional provisions were, and various design standards were. So I've agreed to put it on our agenda, it will be on our agenda for the twenty-first. I think the proponents already submitted some draft changes, we may have more, and then the members will have a look at it again and see if our recommendation has changed, so, but that's where we are for the moment.
Okay, and it would be a shame to have that get lost in the shuffle.
Right, and it may be that through the Planning Board or the warrant committee process that changes, or it may be that the differences, at least among the Planning Board members, are irreconcilable. But with what the developer has done, of course, the other thing is changes have to be within the scope of the article. And that's the other issue as well, is, you know, can what the various members were concerned about be changed within that scope or not? So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Emily, before you step down, I know that you announced that you're, you said it wasn't recorded, unfortunately, no one can see the meeting because it wasn't carried live. So, and the audio recording was lost, but I know Emily announced that she's stepping down from the Planning Board.
That's right.
And that's after two terms of service on the Planning Board and six years on the warrant committee.
Five years on the warrant committee.
Five years on the warrant committee, which is fifteen years of service to the town as a volunteer.
That's a lot.
Many of those years as chair of the warrant committee or chair of the Planning Board, and I know how hard she worked on the warrant committee. I had the privilege of serving with Emily for a couple of those years, so thank you very much for all of your service to the town. I think Milton owes you and you and a great deal of, a great debt, because you've served very well and very, with a lot of dedication and a lot of concern for many issues facing the town, so we're very grateful for your service.
Thank you very much.
I will certainly second that.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Emily.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, item 11 on the agenda is the acceptance of a council on aging donation from an anonymous donor.
I'll make a motion to accept a donation from an anonymous donor in the amount of $5,000 to the Council on Aging to help with outreach and ban transportation program.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
It's great, great news that we can get somebody who can actually, you know, make a donation or something that's obviously going to make a nice impact for them.
Yes, thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 12 on the agenda is the approval of the No Place for Hate proclamation, which we delivered on Mount Luther King Day at the Conquered Baptist Church.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a proclamation reaffirming the Board's support of the No Place for Hate program in the town of Milton.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 13 on the agenda is the town administrator's report.
I don't, I do not have a report at this time.
Item 14 is the chair's report, and I have no report at this time either. 15 is member reports.
I don't have anything at this time, do you?
No, I don't either.
Okay. Citizens' speak responses. We do not really have any citizen speak. I don't think we had any, so. And future agenda items? I think there's still the ones that we've talked about over the-
Over the last couple of meetings, correct?
Yes. Okay, so I will propose a motion to enter into executive session to approve executive session meeting minutes, discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Board, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley, yes. We are in executive session.